Good evening. Today is January the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank all of you guys for being here tonight. Our thought for today is you can, you cannot live a positive life with a negative mind. This is George Myers. We will officially call this meeting to order tonight. Tonight I'm going to ask Commissioner Edwards, who will lead us in our invocation and, and our pledge as well, sir.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for another wonderful day. Lord, we thank you for the cool temperatures. We ask that you protect our citizens tonight. Lead us and guide us in everything we do. We ask this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion that we adopt the agenda, please. Is there a second? Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes for, oh, thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next is the chair's report. Today we have some special guests with us tonight. As you know, we are featuring those who receive ARPA funds and we want to bring them up and let them talk a little bit about what they are utilizing the funds for. First on the list tonight, we have Faith of Jesus Ministries, Pastor Lamar and Elsie Bell. Guys, if you would come on up. Thank you for being here tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Chairman and to, and to our board of commissioners. And to everyone attending. Just want to say first of all, being a working pastor, which is hands-on, that's what I do. The word of God says he bless everything that put my hands to. So, he gave me a helpmate, Pastor Elsie Bell. And I'm just gonna be obedient and step back and let God do what he do through you, Pastor Elsie.
Good evening. To our awesome board of commissioners. We just want to express our heartfelt gratitude for the generous grant that you provided. Your support has made a tremendous, significant impact on our nonprofit. For instance, while deciding whether or not we would apply for the grant, daily we picked up from our suppliers and sometime twice daily. After deciding to get the grant or to apply for the grant, we completed the grant, submitted the grants, and while waiting for approval, we had three trucks to go down. And if you know box trucks, that's an expensive repair. But because of your grant, not only were we able to repair those three trucks, but we were also able to repair the leaky roof that we had, so we could protect our merchandise. We were also able to repair our air conditioning units, so the volunteers would have a nice place to work. And we were also able to purchase shelving for the rooms. So these improvements have allowed us to expand our capacity and to continue our daily operations smoothly. With the improvement made, made possible by your grant, we are now in a better position to serve our clients and plan further for future growth. With them, we look forward to a continued collaboration with you all, and we hope to make even a greater, greater progress with you. Once again, we thank you for your incredible support. We are truly grateful for the opportunity you have given us. And thank you from FOJM Learning Center, the staff, the volunteers, Pastor Lamar Bell, myself, Pastor Vernon Bell, and our director, Natasha Nolly. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so, thank you so much. We greatly appreciate you guys for coming and being here with us tonight.
Ms. C, could I say something right quick?
Sure can.
Well, I'm, I have the, I had the opportunity to, to talk to some people who have received some of the, some of the stuff and groceries from Pastor Bell Church, and I just really thank him because he has really helped a lot of families. And even before he received the grant, he was helping a lot of families too. So he's just been totally a blessing to Newton County.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have to say, because this church is in District Two and Pastor and First Lady Bell are amazing assets, not only to District Two, but the entire community. And I remember the first time, a few years ago, that I got an opportunity where they invited me over to actually see this with my own eyes. It was the most amazing thing I had seen within our community as a whole. And the way that it's organized, and I've seen photos of hundreds of individuals that come to their giveaways, and they generally have giveaways two to three times, maybe four times out of the year. And I mean, there are hundreds of people that come to receive. I mean, they have clothes, they have shoes, they have food, they have home, you know, items. They have toys, they have appliances. They, when I tell you they have everything, this is a mini Walmart. I mean, they, and what I love the most is that they're there to really help support our community. And so I just wanted to say thank you, Pastor and First Lady Bell, for being such an asset, not only in District Two, but in our entire county, and what you bring to the community. And I'm just excited and grateful and honored to partner with you and truly changing the trajectory of our community. So I just want to say thank you for this presentation tonight.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Pastor Darryl Hooper and his lovely First Lady. Guys, if you would come on up, and I think there may be his son with him. You're more than welcome to come up if you feel like, at the Church of Covington.
Thank you so much, Chairman. And I just want to echo on behalf of the community what Commissioner Mason said about FOJM and visiting the site. It's amazing. It's amazing. But let's hear from the Church of Covington, and this is another amazing project. So come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and all of our commissioners. I am certainly reluctant to follow the bells as they are heroes of the faith and heroes in our community. But we also are very grateful for the ARPA funds and the assistance and just the difference that they have helped us to make. In all honesty, we were already working hard and making the most impact we possibly could. But these funds have propelled us forward and enabled, enabled us to do much more, much faster. I have just a few numbers to share with you. Just since May, when the funds were extended to us, our church cares feeding program has fed five thousand one hundred and nineteen households. That is, these are exact numbers, eighteen thousand four hundred and ninety-five individuals, which includes six thousand four hundred and six children, five thousand six hundred and eighty seniors. Total pounds of food given out is a hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-four pounds of food. That's just May through December. One of the things I'm excited about was the Christmas boxes that we put together. We feed every week on Mondays and Thursdays, every single week. And people line up and come through and receive boxes. But this past Christmas, we did something special. We wanted them to receive Christmas boxes. My wife, Kristen, who joins me today, is passionate about hospitality and getting the family back together around the table. If your family and your schedule is anything like ours, that's almost an impossible task. And so she's made it her goal that a couple of times a week, we're, we're having a meal around the table together. Now, a daughter in college and all, all of that, trying to, to juggle that. But as a church, we're passionate about that as well. And so we put together Christmas boxes, which included a complete meal. It was an eight, nine, ten-pound ham. It was the vegetables. It was the rolls. It was everything inside that box down to the sweet tea that they would need to have a Christmas meal together. We even had a baking box that had eggs. Has anybody bought eggs lately? They're expensive. Eggs and flour and everything that they would need to make their pies or their cakes. And we had a hundred and forty-nine people receive Christmas boxes on December the twenty-second. It was at a cost of just over five thousand dollars, but it was another eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five point nine pounds of food. Five hundred and seventy-six people were fed a Christmas box. I did just some quick math. It's about eight dollars and sixty cents per person. And I couldn't help but think how far eight dollars and sixty cents would go. If a family got together that hadn't been together in a while, maybe if someone was forgiven, maybe if someone was loved, maybe if, if someone was welcomed back at the table who had been absent for a while. Can I tell you that that investment is worth every single penny if we can make a difference in the family? I'll move quickly because one of the programs I'm, I'm most excited about, that these funds have helped us launch and getting off the ground is, is a fostering program. I know this coming Sunday is Sanctity of Life Sunday, and for us, life is not a political issue. It is a spiritual issue as, as we believe God gives life. But I also understand the challenges of every mother making that choice and that decision and, and needing help, needing assistance. And so we are putting our best foot forward and trying to do that. We've learned that there are hundreds and hundreds of foster kids, even in Newton County, outside of Newton County, that simply have no help. And so, brand new for us is our church closet. Recently, we had a family of eight that was removed from a home in an emergency situation. Kids, eight kids, and they left the home in an emergency without shoes, without proper clothing. And they were able to come to the church closet and get all of the clothes they needed, all of the essentials they needed to get them through their first few days until more arrangements could be made. We're, we're talking about clothes and car seats and coats and mattresses and, and shoes and whatever they possibly could need because we, we want to be committed to more than just physical needs, but spiritual needs as well. And we're welcoming in foster parents with foster kids to come and be impacted in our church kids and our church youth programs because these kids and all kids need positive role models, big brothers, big sisters, people that are going to be a great influence in their life. We're passionate about the next generation, and we are mentoring the next generation. My son, who is seventeen, a junior at Eastside High School, just asked a few minutes ago, could I work here? I said, you need to go talk to the chairman. You never know. They may have a position available. Get to work, boy. But we, we're committed to training the youth to serve God and community. These are not ideals or values that we want to start instilling in them when they are eighteen or twenty-one or twenty-five or just about to get married. We want to start as young as possible. And so we have interim programs and mentoring programs because our youth need us now. And this grant money is helping us make that difference. I know money is scarce. I know there is not extra. But if you ever need a church whose heart is in the right place, call the bells and, and, and get them what they need, and then call us because we are ready to make a difference in Newton County. I pray for you guys. I bless you folks, and I thank you very much for.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that Church of Covington is in District Four. In fact, while you were speaking, leaning over towards the Commissioner Cowan, I said, is it District Four or District, or District Five? He said, and we looked at each other, he said, don't matter. It's, it's just the thought of doing something good for our community. And, and we thank you. We thank God for you and your family and continue to keep up the good work.
Pastor, thank you guys for being here tonight. We greatly appreciate what you do for this community. Thank you, First Lady, as well. Your ministry, thank you Pastor Bell and First Lady Bell. Thank you guys for what you do in this community as well. Next, we're gonna bring up Deacon Fred Johnson. As you know, we just celebrated Dr. Martin Luther King, celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Day. And Deacon Johnson is one who's always out there doing something on this, on this grand day. Deacon, you want to tell us a little bit about what you did and what you was able to, to do?
Well, on, on yesterday, we did a day on instead of a day off. So we were able to get, we had, I think it was twelve volunteers that showed up to help out. I think I had one deacon from my church and one of my large members was there. And it was a member from Livingston Church. And another family had some people buried there. And there was three, I think, three or four other ladies that came down to clean off around that, that, that immediate family. But anyway, we, we did what we could do. You can see, we had a lot of little pine trees there when we got there. And we didn't have enough help to gather up all the debris and pile it up, so we just had to just leave it. And at least we cut it down and hoping that we'll be able to get back in there and to sprain and spray it, you know, at some time to, to hold the little bushes down. We did find a lot of graves that needed dirt to go in them that had sunken. And I'm gonna ask the, ask the, this board to, you know, see if we can get some dirt out there sometime, and we'll try to get some of those graves refilled in. But another thing we found out, at least I found out, the, the couple was there that had, was working on, they had family members buried there, and it brought to my attention that the grave had been opened. Somebody had gone in and dug out the dirt down to the casket. And I called the sheriff and see what he wanted to do about it, and he sent some deputies out to take a look at it, and they stayed around and finally decided to get the coroner to come out and take a look. And he was able to, to look down in the casket and see that the bones and clothing and so forth was still intact and gave us permission to cover the, the grave back up. So as long as I've been going around looking at cemeteries, a lot of time I've been by myself. This is the first time I ever run across anything like that. I have no idea what they was looking for or anything like that. But, you, you know, we just be, be watchful. I did have another cemetery I was planning on doing on yesterday also, Camel Cemetery down on, well, it's Montgomery Cemetery down on Camel Road. But I didn't have enough help to do that, so I just had to do what I, what, what, what we could do. And Stan, he did bring me some, some doughnut, doughnut holes, the holes that, that goes in the doughnuts. He brought those to me, right? And somebody dropped the ball on giving us some Chick-fil-A's and so forth. I'm not gonna say who did that. But, but anyway, we didn't have that. But I did have enough refreshments and so forth to, to take care of those. And we're planning on trying to do something else the rest of this year sometime.
Thank you, thank you, sir, for always. I, I can't, I can go back many of years and I can't remember when, when you started doing this, but you've been doing it a long, long, long time. And so we greatly appreciate it, appreciate, appreciate you. I was sick under the weather, so I do apologize for not giving you no Chick-fil-A. I knew it, right? Commissioner, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. C. I just want to say this. You know, I think that Mr. Johnson is like myself, you know, in age, and which is a good thing. But we don't work as fast and as hard, at least I know I don't, as I used to, when I was a little, when I was a little bit younger. I want this board, and maybe it's sometimes asking County Manager, to see if we can figure out a way to get that help on MLK Day or maybe a certain day of the, of the month of paying some men. The same with pick up trash. We pay people to pick up trash. And they probably go back and pick up trash every other week, sometimes two or three times in the same week at the same places where people dump trash at. And so why can't we maybe pay a couple of men who may want to work those days that Mr. Johnson is, is working to help clean those grave sites? And there's no doubt in my mind that there's a lot of history there, history of men's and women's who, who just did so much for Newton County. And at the very least, we can do is to clean off their graves. Thank you, Ms. C.
Thank you, sir. Next is County Manager Report.
Chairman, board members, citizens of the community, come before you today with the County Manager's Report. We're gonna talk about the third P today, processes. In particular, we're gonna talk about properties. I stated on the December fifth meeting that I know that there were some concerns about the properties and whether or not we have lease agreements, so on and so forth. So today's presentation touch on that. I also shared with the board a, on January twelfth, a policy as well as lease agreements that I wanted all board members to review so that we can, in turn, come back together and figure out a general consensus so that Patrick and I can make whatever revisions that are needed or so on and so forth. But let's talk about the vision for these properties. The vision is simple, standardization. We want to make sure that we manage our properties in a standardized and fair manner. We want to make sure that we have lease agreements in place as needed and also intergovernmental agreements in place as needed. And we want to also address those short-term renters as well with agreements also. Let's talk about properties. County-owned, not county-owned, and operated under an intergovernmental agreement, so on and so forth. Let's start with the county-owned, currently unoccupied. That's Gum Creek, and that's Nelson Heights Community Center. When we talk about county-owned, operated under a lease agreement, we have Washington Street and portions of RL Cousins. County-owned, currently operated without a lease agreement, TK Adams Historic Bandroom and portions of the Cousins Community Center, I mean, excuse me, the Cousins Center, RL Cousins. Operated under an intergovernmental agreement, we have the Mansfield Community Center. And not county-owned is the Almond Community Center. Let's look at the operations within Cousins. We have some county operations such as our Emergency Management Department, our Workforce Unit, Keep Newton Beautiful. And we have two state agencies, Department of Juvenile Justice as well as the Department of Driver Services, with an entity that works closely with the state, and that is CASA, our court-appointed special advocates. Other entities that are housed there are the Newton County Community Partnership, also known as Newton County Family Connection, and our Historical Committee on Black Heritage Preservation, and also Covington Police Department has a storage area there. When we talk about our intergovernmental agreements, currently, the Mansfield Community Center is operated under an IGA. This agreement was entered into in two thousand and twelve and outlines the responsibilities both of Newton County and the city of Mansfield. Lease agreements, as I stated earlier, we want to standardize our practices in association with that. So facilities that are available for short-term rental for events have written on agreements. These reservations are typically handled by our Parks and Rec Department. Not all facilities will be available for short-term rentals. It would be disruptive to allow short-term rental in facilities, for example, who has a stated goal and who are, who are operating a comprehensive program. Currently, there's no standard long-term lease agreement relative to all properties that are outlined, that outlines the responsibilities of both the program operator and the county. Hence, that's why I shared those documents with the board and waiting feedback from them. Patrick and his team at Gerard and Davis, they looked over and prepared the lease agreement. And as I stated before, the board has a review on them. It has been reviewing them since January twelfth. Long-term rental agreements. You know, the county will, will not seek to collect rental payments in exchange for comprehensive program and the services provided to. in exchange for comprehensive program and the services provided to all residents in Newton County. When entering into these lease agreements, program operators will be required to disclose programs, offering and services that will provide, they will provide to the county and be a benefit to the county. No organization operating under lease agreements will have the authority to sublease to a third-party organization. Responsibilities of the county. Major repairs and replacements of roof, foundations, structural, structural elements, exterior walls of the buildings on the property and maintenance of the underground utility and sewer pipes outside the exterior walls of the buildings are something that the county will be responsible for. And also replacement of worn-out or irreparable mechanical and electrical systems. Responsibilities of the leasing. Shall outline program initiatives that benefit all residents and execute said program. Shall maintain the property and keeping a good state of cleanliness and maintenance and repair. Have some ownership in the property. You're leasing it, right? Uh, leasing shall pay utility costs, groundskeeping and pest control. And maintain commercial general liability coverage and commercial automobile liability insurance. Move forward. After the input from the board, we'll begin meeting with the authorized representatives from the programs, operators to enter into these standardized lease agreements. Uh, current program operators who currently are not under any type of lease format, you know, will be offered the opportunity to adhere to one or given sixty days to find an alternative location. The goal is to en- ensure again standardization and making sure that we're consistent in our efforts. Yell back my time, Mr. Chair.
To, uh, zoning, uh, it's actually seven twenty-nine. So we're going to go. We're going to go into zoning right now. Of course we are. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up, please. Thank you, ma'am, for being here tonight.
Good evening, Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board. We have, uh, just one petition this afternoon. It's a, an appeal case. It is APP twenty-three dash zero 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 five. And our applicant today, it's Carol Finn and Stephen Von Bromson. I hope I pronounced that correctly. The original case number that they're appealing is the VAR twenty-three dash zero 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 eleven. And the original applicant is Torin Mike. The address is at eleven thirty-five Bethany Road. The tax ID parcel is zero zero one six zero four three eight, District Two. And it's on twenty-three point two three acres, currently zoned AR. And who's the residential use? So the original request that is being appealed today is an appeal to the BZA's decision on their VAR twenty-three dash zero 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 one one, which was to approve the relief from the required setbacks for a kennel for dog boarding and grooming. And the original request was to seek relief from the required setbacks for kennel for boarding and grooming. And today they're appealing that approval from the BZA. Potential effects on the county, none if developed with staff recommended conditions. The applicable standard we're looking at is Division five ten, Section five ten dash three five five, which, um, describes a kennel, which is as four or more. And we're looking at, um, Part C where it says no kennel shall be located within five hundred feet of a residential district. And I won't read through all the other criteria. It is included in your, um, application, in your petition packet. Just a brief history, on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the BZA approved the request by a vote of five zero to seek relief from the required setbacks for the kennel for boarding and grooming. And they approved the variance with the following recommendations listed below. I've already included these in the recommendations for tonight's case. I won't read through all of them here. But just noted the BZA added the seventh one, which was the kennel shall house no more than twenty dogs now or in the future. And the side plan analysis, um, on October tenth, the original applicant submitted a side plan which shows the location of the existing primary structure and the proposed location of the kennel for no more than twenty dogs, and that's after future expansion. The current home is approximately five hundred and eighty-seven feet off of the road. The property fluctuates from approximately six hundred and twelve to seven hundred and eighty-three feet across or in width. Due to the shape of the property, there is no location which will allow for a five hundred foot setback from the both sides, which would be the east and the western boundaries. And on October twenty-sixth, sorry, November thirtieth, the BZA approved the applicant's request to reduce the side setback requirement for kennels from five hundred feet to four hundred and forty-one feet for the eastern property line and down to two hundred and sixty-one feet on the western property line. And I should note here that the north and southern boundaries, they meet the requirements of five hundred feet or more away from a residential zoning. So the variance is only for the east and western boundaries. So the applicant, um, for the appeal lives to the south of this property. And their property line is approximately eight hundred and fifty-five feet away from the proposed location of the kennel. And this exceeds the required five hundred feet. The two lots are also separated by trees and a pond. And the current applicant's concern is that the dogs may be heard from the kennel, uh, once it's established and starts. So should the request be approved, staff recommends the Board of Commissioners approve the application with the following conditions. One, and one through seven are conditions that the BZA approved. So the one, the kennel is for the purpose of boarding and grooming of dogs. Two, the kennel shall be at least four hundred and forty-one feet off of the eastern side property line and at least two sixty-one feet off of the western side property line. Any building or enclosed structures for the housing of animals shall have a minimum setback of at least a hundred feet from all property lines, at least a hundred and fifty feet from the public right of way. All areas housing animals shall be completely enclosed by walls or fences at least five feet in height. Any outside activity or exercises for the dogs must occur within a hundred feet of any of the boundary lines on the property. Outside pens must be located a minimum of fifty feet from an intermittent stream and a hundred and fifty feet from a perennial stream. The kennel shall house no more than twenty dogs now or in the future. And, um, in light of the appeals we received, staff is also recommending an eighth recommendation, which is the owner will put design measures for the kennel in place to help reduce any potential noise from the dogs. This is the property we're looking at. I don't think my pointer's working. And this is a close-up of where the proposed, um, location for the kennel will be. And that's the home on the property there just in front of it. This shows the location, the proposed location of the property and, um, on the northern parcel with the yellow star. That is the current location. Then the applicant lives to the south in the blue parcel that is outlined. And you can see the distance is, you know, just, um, over eight hundred feet. I put two measurements there. Those are approximations. So that's how far the kennel will be from just the boundary line of the applicant's property. And then it shows also the tree coverage in between and the pond. Of course, its zoning is agricultural residential. It's located in the South River. It is in District Two. This is a survey of the property is provided by an applicant. You can see the pond and the house there. And this is the side plan. So it shows the house, the proposed location of the kennel and the enclosed areas it's going to be in. And then the pond that is on the property. And this is just a close-up. They've included the measurements that they were requesting. These are just concept drawings, um, they're proposing for the kennel and its enclosure. And this is just an aerial view of the same diagrams. And are there any questions for staff?
Thank you. Open up for the public hearing.
And the applicant is here, Chairman.
Thank you. We're going to open it up now, seven thirty-seven. We're going to open it up now for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. Uh, please come on up now, state your name and address for the record, please. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stephen Von Bromson. Live at property sixteen thirty-nine Covered Bridge Road. Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six. So in, um, have you guys been able to include a letter with inside of the appeal package as well? Have you guys had an opportunity to review that letter? If not, um, let me go through the, the basic format of what the letter entails. So from the last meeting, there were two things that were brought up that I addressed in that letter. Firstly, the distance requirement of five hundred. And secondly, the fact that we're in agricultural type setting, which was two of the main arguments that I heard for the approval of prior decision. Talking about the agricultural first, and then I'll go to the distance side of that letter. Agriculturally, um, what was brought up in the last meeting was, um, because you live in the country, you should expect to have noises out in the country and that's what you should expect. Um, sure, um, fair point. Uh, what I don't expect is dogs. I expect cows, horses, the things that we have around us today. Um, in terms of a distance of five hundred feet, probably not a big difference because cows emit about thirty dB of noise level and the other about sixty dB. Um, dogs can reach about a hundred and twenty dB.
So, uh, yeah. So, um, it's for the, those that are speaking in favor tonight.
After the appeal?
Yes.
So I'm the one who did the appeal for wanting to get it overturned.
Okay.
I'm in favor of the appeal.
Okay.
So I'm just outlining the fact that in previous, it was stated that if you live in the country.
You said it was stated, okay, okay.
Correct. If you live in the country, that you should just deal with dog noises because you moved out the country, you should deal with the noise.
Okay.
And what I'm trying to put across as a point is that noises, cows, and things I expect from agricultural, horses, cows, absolutely. Dogs, I can reach three times that noise level, not so much. And when you're talking about one dog, and I gave context in the last meeting in terms of, we have one dog today that barks incessantly. Uh, the owner has kept it in about a fifteen by fifteen pen, approximately three hundred feet away, and it's very loud. Uh, now we're talking about five to twenty dogs potentially, and let's just use twenty dogs because that's the worst-case scenario. Hundred and twenty dB. For every extra dog you add, there's another three dB on top of that. So three times twenty, sixty, you're going to like a hundred and fifty dB in noise level. That's very loud, is my point. I don't know what the five hundred feet does when a bark can reach half a mile to even a mile away. Context, that's five thousand two hundred and eighty feet is a mile. Five hundred feet, I don't know what that does. Um, I know that one of the points from the last was that there's lots of trees. Trees do absolutely nothing. The sound dampening. Um, the construction, if we go back to that, kind of listed up here, I see that there's a lot of encased fencing there that does nothing for noise abatement as well. Go back to my main point, which is cows, horses, those are the things I expect to see in agricultural setting. Dogs, not so much. Can you have them as pets, but having twenty pets in an agricultural setting? It just doesn't seem normal. It seems abnormal for this setting. Again, cows, horses, noises, those are the things I expect. Dog kennels in agricultural, I don't expect. It's going to be loud. It's going to be incessant. Um, dogs are built to bark. Their instinct is to bark at anything that becomes eluding. The neighbor's dog starts barking, guess what's going to happen with five, twenty dogs? They're all going to start barking. Uh, one of the things I brought up in the letter was a concern about who's going to control that noise when it becomes. What happens if the folks have to step out to go do something, they go away for a couple hours? Who's going to control that? Would like to keep good relations with the neighbors. I feel like this is going to have a negative impact towards that. Um, is there any questions you guys have for me at this point? I've kind of outlined the major points of that appeal letter that I submitted. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. We all, we also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. Oh, you want to speak in favor? You want to speak in favor? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lindsay Finn. I am Carol Finn's daughter. Um, I apologize she could not be here tonight. One of our concerns obviously is the sound. I did see on the, um, sheet before that there was an ad of the, uh, a noise abatement, um, would be added on. And I guess our question would be, what is that? Is that a solid fence? Is it, um, some, I, we've looked online, there are some, um, barking deterrent things that you can use in your private homes. Um, we've had to use one for a dog when I was, I remember when I was much younger. Um, so we like the, that, to see that the appeal is added that number eight step. But what does that look like? How is that barking? What type of fence or what type of structure would be put up to help minimize the sound travel? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone that's in favor of the appeal, anyone, anyone else that's in favor of the appeal? Thank you. Um, we also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose the appeal. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. No, he's a, so, uh, it's kind of backwards, yeah. Well, it's not really backwards. Hold on. So, hold on for one second, sir. Shane, if you would, come on back up, please. Just, yeah. Just want to make sure everybody on the same page. Hold right there. Um, so can you, you explain the appeal process? Because there's some questions about the appeal process. This is the original applicant. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's, Mr. Mike is the original applicant for the variance that the BZA approved.
It was approved.
And then we received, uh, notice to appeal.
Someone wanted to appeal it.
So this case was generated.
Okay.
And this is where we are today. So Mr. Bromson, he is the applicant for the appeal today.
Okay.
So he's basically the second applicant on, in this process.
And just the original?
Uh, yes. Torin Mike is the original applicant as well as the, um, the owner of the property that is, that was granted the variance for the kennel.
Thank you. Sir, if you would, please come on up.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Torin Mike. I live at eleven thirty-five Bethany Road. Um, yeah, and we were trying to get our, maybe kennel set up. Um, if you hadn't had an opportunity to read the letter that Mr. Bromson put together, it's a really good letter. I mean, it does outline a lot of good points, particularly to noise. Um, we've only been in Newton County now for a little over nine months. Um, so first and foremost, we're not in the business of trying to, I guess, you know, be a nuisance to neighbors or create something that's going to, I guess, disturb the, the general character, you know, of the community. For example, um, as was stated, my neighbor has about, you know, score, I want to say maybe a couple score of cattle across the street. They raise blueberries down the road, you know, they do alpacas. Um, and I guess it isn't very intuitive that dogs would be a part of kind of the agricultural setting. But, you know, Department of Georgia of Agriculture runs all dog kennel license. So the state of Georgia believes that dogs are a part of kind of the agricultural setting. And so I just highlight that to say that it's not necessarily intuitive, but it is a part of that setting when we think of it in that way. I guess another point would be the, the, the dog in question. And I one hundred percent agree, if you have an animal in a fifteen by fifteen space, um, that's not interacted with a lot, that's kind of left to its own devices, it will be reactive. However, if we're, if that's the baseline from which we're extrapolating what all the other animals, you know, will con- how they'll conduct themselves, I think it's, uh, it's a bit disingenuous in a certain sense. But so I do agree that, yes, if I had animals exactly in that setting, the likelihood that they would be barking incessantly, um, is very plausible. So the two things that I want to talk about, um, one, the sound mitigation, because that's brought up and that's worth resolving. And starting there, that's going to be more of, I guess, a design question and then also an operational question. So with respect to design, this concept drawing is, was just to give kind of a rough idea of what we're doing. Um, but the two things that I want to call out is, one, that each. Um, but the two things that I wanna call out is, one, that each compartment is kind of segmented. The framing within that compartment, we have offset framing, so that is to say, opposing pieces of drywall don't touch, right? So, a bark, a whine in one room doesn't transfer to the next room. Again, that's number one. Number two is that there's also insulation that we're planning on having in there to further dampen any noise. From an operational perspective, we don't intend to bring all of the animals out at once. I know there's this, again, this idea of what we expect a kennel to be, that maybe some folks just have kind of a long row, we've come to call it kind of like puppy Alcatraz, there's just like, the, you know, they're like three-sided hutchers, the animals come out, and it's just, we let them play, they kind of, they're left to their own devices, and then we kind of wrangle them in back, you know, at the end of the day. Our research has led us to believe that's not, most consumers only have that option, but they're looking for different options, kind of one-on-one, more intimate care. And so, to that end, this idea for us having one-on-one time with each animal is how we believe that, one, we'll be able to keep the sound down, but two, we won't create this kind of pandemonium. Because if anyone stands to lose the most from twenty barking dogs, it certainly isn't the person that's five hundred feet away. You know, it's the house that's fifty feet away. So, more than anyone here, I think we have a vested interest in ensuring that we don't have twenty barking dogs right in our backyard. So, the operational piece is definitely to kind, I guess, manage the animals in a way that is true to the ethos of one-on-one attention, intimate care. Um, I also should point out a different, uh, design element, that each compartment has its own separate door. Typically, when you walk into a dog kennel, there's one door, and then there's two fleets on either side of just open cages, right? So, when, the moment you open one door, the totality of that kennel starts barking, right? The animals learn that this is how we get outside. So, one door equals all of the dogs barking. And like, we understand that, so this is why we opted for a design that is, one dog or a pair of dogs, I'm sorry, one dog or a pair of dogs, one door. That way, door number one doesn't trigger, you know, dogs four, five, and six. Uh, to the second point with regards to the fencing that we've included here, as you can see, each, each dog will have its own patio, those patios are not visible. Right, the, the modeling software we use to generate this concept art, and it, we, it was for a matter of expediency. But each compartment for each dog doesn't allow them to see other dogs. And again, that's just to reduce the reactivity, cause if we're in a situation where, let's say, we have one dog that doesn't play well with other dogs, right? It, it, it benefits us nothing at all to have that dog barking in a high-stress environment consistently being, yeah, either, you know, antagonizing the other animals, or, you know, itself being antagonized. So, that, those, um, those little patios, those aren't visible to the left and to the right. And so, the main visibility comes in our common area. But in reality, that's just for, when employees are taking the dogs out, they don't have to be in that individualized patio space. That they can take the animal to a much larger space, um, any additional services that we might be offering there um, can be conducted in that space with the, I mean, in the beginning, it'll be myself. In the future, um, we hope to have employees that we can have managing this for us. Um, with respect to, you know, what we will do in the event that, you know, the homeowners are gone. In this case, if me and my partner are not home, and the bo, the dogs start barking. Um, so, I work from home, so, I spend eighty percent of my time at home. When I'm not trying to get, get the rest of our farm online, um, I'm working my full-time job. And on the point of our farm, I think there are other downward pressures on just the reality of how many animals will be out here. So, the county has several ordinances that kind of dictate how many cloven hoof animals, how many dogs you can have on any given property, right? So, as our population of, um, sheep, goat, uh, we hope, uh, you know, kind of cows, uh, as the gentleman kind of, uh, mentioned before, uh, because there's only so many animals that we can have, we can't have the, there's not a situation where we're gonna have thirty cows and twenty dogs. So, I think there are a lot of, like, based on the ordinance, there are mechanisms in place that create downward pressure on the total number of dogs that we have, number one. From a design perspective, there are three design, I guess, strategies that we're implementing to reduce the overall, I guess, noise impact. And then from an operational perspective, in order to deliver the one-on-one care, the kind of intimate, um, care that we're trying to deliver to customers to differentiate ourselves from all other kennel types, uh, those three elements combined is what we hope is what will make our kennel successful. And like noise reduction, this happens almost as, um, a consequence of those, I guess, two strategies that we're trying to implement. So, yeah, I think, you know, that's what we're going for. Again, we don't, we're not, it, it isn't our intent to be a nuisance. It certainly isn't our intent to maximize our, uh, the business by just having dogs running wild. We think from personal observations and kenneling my dog, he always comes back wild and anxious, and I think it's a lot of because the play is very unstructured. He's constantly around other animals. And I think by creating a situation where we can kind of get away from that, it's something people will be interested in, and it's a way where we think we can be successful. Um, and that can work kind of in the spirit and the character of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Applewhite.
I think this is in District Two. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before I move forward in my motion, I wanted to have a quick question. Um, for Ms. Applewhite. So, a, and if I'm hearing this accurately, this is, this, um, zoning request is to be not just for their personal animals, but it is to actually run a, uh, boarding or grooming business. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's a commercial kennel.
Okay. So, um, in real estate, um, you always hear that location, location, location uh, is key, and it is ideal. Um, and so, just based off of the information that I'm hearing, um, it is very challenging for me to actually make a decision tonight. Uh, so, what I would like to do, to get some additional information, is I would actually like to put this in the form of a motion. Um, so, I move that, uh, appeal, A P P two-three dash zero 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 five, uh, be tabled for the next sixty days. Um, so that I can actually get some additional information, uh, to be able to make the best decision uh, for this part of, uh, the District Two community.
Thank you, sir, is there a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Mason, and that we tabled this in second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner, um, Cow.
This is for Patrick. Um, this is a, an appeal of a decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
That's correct.
Does our ordinance allow for that?
You can, uh, you can table the decision. So, I would caution Commissioner Mason, the information you obtain needs to be presented to this board in a public session before the decision is made. So, while you can table the matter to the, to the, well, not to the next meeting, because now we now do advertising requirements. But whatever additional information is to be considered, must be considered by the whole board in the context of the public hearing.
Absolutely. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Well.
Any opposed? Not just, any opposed? Yes or no?
The motion is tabled.
For, yeah, there's a motion on the floor to table this for sixty days. Um, any, any opposed? Any opposed? All in favor? Let's do it again, y'all, let's do it again.
Okay.
In favor of table?
All in favor? Thank you. Stand table for sixty days. Thank you, Ms. Applewhite.
You're chairman.
So, we're gonna revert back to the county's ma, county manager's report. Um, Mr. Cooper, were you done?
Yes.
Any questions, guys? Uh, Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much. I did have the opportunity to review the agreement and the policy, and it was, and I sent the detailed email probably around six or seven, six o'clock, and I appreciate you probably guys saw that. But I had a couple of questions, cause some of the items were a little bit contradictory. But the first thing I wanted to ask, and maybe this is a Patrick question, who owns Allman Community Center? And the reason why I'm asking that, because when I came in in twenty twenty-one, our former county manager, uh, Lloyd Kerr, when I started receiving complaints, he was the one who informed me that it was a county-owned property, and that there was agreement with the county for Mr. Chuck Berry to maintain it on behalf of the county. So, now, this is the first time I'm hearing in twenty twenty-four that it's not owned by the county, cause I wanna know why the county managers, previous county managers, had no idea it wasn't owned by the county.
So, we undertook a thorough title examination of the property and determined that the county did not own the property.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna see if I can tell you, if I have, I'm not sure I have that available. Um, the name of the owner, it is a, let's just see, bear with me. I may have to provide you that later.
Yeah, cause that's gonna be-
Do you have, do you have that at your fingertips, Mr. Cooper, by any chance?
It's owned, it's owned by a trust.
That's right.
And those parties are a collective of families.
So, so, why was the county involved? Cause when I was speaking to Mr. Kerr, he said the county also does maintenance in the building as far as cutting the grass. So, why is the county being involved in someone's personal property?
Well, the only thing that I knew of the county doing was, uh, prov, uh, assisting them with their water services, right? And I do know that at one point in time, this was a voting precinct. So, I don't know if it carried on until we actually did this most recent search on January tenth. But, once I received the information on January tenth, that's why I wanted to come and bring it to before this board today.
Can we please do a research on how much funding has been provided to that building? If it is a building that is not owned by the county, then why is the county even involved? And why was the previous county manager and leadership was not aware and was informed that this was a county building? This is what was told to the residents of Newton County that inquired, and also told to myself inquired.
Well, effective immediately, we have been removed from that since I found out about it on January tenth.
That's, that's very interesting. In regards to the, uh, Mansfield, and these are questions I'm asking based on the report. Mansfield Community Center says intergovernmental agreement since twenty twelve. Is this recorded and filed with the county and timestamped?
It is on record with the county. The Board of Commissioners approved that intergovernmental agreement in two thousand twelve.
And how long is the agreement?
I believe it is thirty years.
Thirty years, okay.
That's my recollection, I'll confirm that for you.
Okay. And so, that is a county-owned building, correct?
It is owned by the City of Mansfield, but we have an agreement to operate it.
To operate, okay, alright. So, I was looking at the actual contract. There was a little bit of contradiction versus in the agreement, where it says no subletting. And also, in the policy, it says you can temporarily sublet. So, I believe that in the agreement, that needs to be adjusted, because if you have individual signing where it says no subletting, but in the policy, it says you can temporarily sublet, that's a contradiction.
Right, and that was by design. Um, the, the, the reference to the sublease in the body of the lease document refers to a traditional sublease where I say, I'm gonna, I'm out and you can take over the lease. So, we prohibit that from happening. We prohibit allowing the tenant to have someone else take over the lease. What we authorize is allowing other people to, on a short-term basis, utilize the building for activities. So, that is, those are, those are designed to be two separate things. But we'll certainly look at it and, and-
Cause it can be confusing, cause if you're, uh, holding someone accountable for subletting, but in the policy, it says you can, we might wanna look at that agreement and update that.
And we will look at that, and that's why we wanted to get the general feedback as a collective from the board, so that we can make those changes as needed.
Um, there was also an item that talked about the approval of flyers and so forth. It talked about the marketing and promotion that's in the policy. So, it stated that they have to send their produced flyer to the county for approval. Now, if you know about marketing costs, if you have a graphic artist and so forth who already designed an actual flyer, and then you're stating to send it to the county to approve it, and the county may have some edits, then there gonna be a cost for that individual who created that flyer from that, from that app, from that, uh, graphic artist and whoever designed it. So, my suggestion was for the county to provide an example flyer, a process already approved, to give to the person who is actually utilizing the facility to say, these are the items that you can actually put on the flyer, and the items that you, you should exclude. Because then it's gonna be a cost to those who are actually creating marketing material. Then the county is saying, once you create the marketing material, you need to pay somebody to design it, you gotta send it over to me to get it approved. That's in the policy. So, that may need to be looked at as well. Um, the other, the last thing that, yes, the last thing, it stated about payment to the county. It said that any rents or any funds collected has to be given to the county, has to go through the county. That was, I, I think, I can't remember what item was, but it's in my detail. But, it also stated that the person who is signing the agreement, the leasing, has to provide a detailed report at the end of the year of the money that they collected from the rent. But the money is turned in or directly given to the county. So, I was wondering, that sound like a contradiction. And also, what are the funding gonna be used for? If that person is in that building, they have an event, or that somebody is renting it out, normally, they would use those fundings to take care of the maintenance, take care of utilities and so forth. So, I put a suggestion in there in regards to them being able to turn in their invoices to have their utilities taken care of. So, there was no standard operating procedure as to what the funding was gonna be used for if the county is collecting the rent, uh, from the person who's renting out that building. There was nothing written on what, where the funding was gonna be used for, where it's going, and what's gonna be done. Is it gonna go back to the leasing to be able to use for upgrades or upkeeps? Nothing was actually written in, in that policy.
So, I will address the first issue. Um, the second issue is a business decision for the, for the county to make. But the, the reason for the report, the annual report detailing the amounts received is to ensure that we have, in fact, received all the money. Kinda like your tax return.
Right.
You, you know, they pull taxes out of your, your paycheck every month, but you still have to file a return saying, here's how much money I made, here's how much I gave you. So, that's an effort to simply have the tenant confirm to us, here's how much money we made in re, rental revenue, so we can confirm that the appropriate money for paid over.
So, where is the funding, what's the funding gonna be used for?
Well, that's a, that's a business decision for y'all to make, y'all.
So, that was my question, it was not outlined in detail of what the money is gonna be used for, if the leasing can use that for the utilities, cause I think they're responsible for utilities, am I correct in that agreement? They're responsible for upkeeps, so if they're having individuals that they have promoted to utilize the building, the county didn't do that, the leasing did that. So, where, what is the funding gonna be utilized for? So, that needs to be outlined in detail, I believe, and I'm pretty sure it's up to the entire board before you have someone sign the contract. And that was all I had.
Thank you. And, uh, this is to, to our, uh, to the county manager. Who was paying the utility bill up until, until you had it cut over at, uh, Allman? I think I called Allman, probably mispronouncing it. Who's paying the utility bill?
We were responsible for that water bill.
Okay, how, how, okay, the water bill. So, they were, so, uh, Mr. Berry, whom I know, is a good man. So, he were paying a utility bill from the, I guess, from the fund that had been taken up, taken uh, from the, I guess, the people who leased the building. I guess that's how it would be paid, so it's not in the county name.
I don't have that answer, sir, so, and, and I'm trying to figure out, what are you trying to a, ask particularly?
Uh, but, one thing what I'm seeing is, I'm familiar with that particular piece of property. County had always paid the utility bill, and everything is, is there. There never has been, since I've been on the board, a discussion of whether or not it was county property, because either it was given to the county, or however it was given, it was county property. And so, he should follow, or should have followed the same rules as any other, um, community center or his buildings. And so, that's what the problem is. It's, this, this is what I would like to see. And this is, I guess, to my fellow board members, some of them are talking a little bit. We have got to stop caving in to people who may have, um, who are rich alike to a certain degree. And just start doing what's right. Because I don't know why we keep rewriting and saying, well, we need to go out and find out who's paying this. We did it a few years ago. Come here, Senator, you were there, we said that everybody, Allman, we said, uh, that time, Nelson Hikes, and all them should be under the same- and all of them should be under the same rules and regulations of whatever we were doing, but we found out that it wasn't. And, and it's, and I think it's a shame from, on this board, is that we're going to go out and, and, and somewhat, almost, and this is my opinion, because I've always ever been there, you know, run out Ms. Terry James from the TK Adams Building because you said she haven't got a lease. What you may know, or what I think most of everybody knows was, it was about the five million dollars that, um, we had gave to a fire station in District One, which was unbudgeted. So Commissioner Demond, Commissioner Sanders and myself, we said that we wanted to do something, hopefully in our district. And so we made a motion and it was approved that we wanted five million dollars. But later on in this, during the discussion, uh, Demond, Commissioner Demond, said that he didn't want to hold District One hostage. I said, what you mean, we're just trying to get something. So the compromise was that Commissioner Sanders, she got two hundred thousand dollars to do the fitness over in District Three. And I said renovate the TK Adams Building, which Lloyd Kerr came out and approved and looked at it. And I think Commissioner Cowan had said, you know, said that what we need to do, we want to go ahead and give her a lease. And it'd been on and on and on and on. And I don't think we wanted just what we, the little bit that we agreed upon. That's what's all we want, ever wanted. And, but we found something different. Find out something different, just stop changing stuff and let's, and let's do it right. And go by what we said we're going to do. Just stop saying we're going to do in-house attorney and never do do it, because it may not be what everybody, what majority of the board may want. But it's what we said and we told the peoples. I don't like lying to the citizens of Newton County. I don't like to lie, I like to tell the truth, that's what I like to do. And so if it's something that, and I just to our county manager, it's something that you may not know about, something, if I'm not somebody who may have a little bit of insight on exactly what it is, and I'd be glad to tell you as far as what it is. The Nelson Hikes lease, it was pattern after Mansfield Community Center. You could lease it out, whatever you want to do, pattern after that. And Patrick know that that's what it was, but it came, it came back with so many, all this stuff. And what it really boiled down to, this old commissioner helping people, putting in the food bank, helping the kids, going out and getting D-one children to go to D-one colleges, some going to pro. They didn't want that in a poor community. Then they said, well, you know, you're stealing. Well, I was not stealing, I was raised better than that. And they start telling all kinds of lies. They want my family to sit there, my grandson, I was paying it. Hey, who had put more money than in my own money? There was money in a secondary account, I just put that one so we could run it out through that. That's what I done. It was in the direction of the community. And now that Martin Luther King Day is coming, guess what we do? We're going to go out there and harass Ms. Terry James. Say you don't got a lease and this is something we had told and get months ago. Months ago, maybe a year, maybe two years ago, ever since it was over there, it was supposed to get together with her, the county manager, and do it, enough to get done. So, you know. One of these days, these people here in Newton County is going to figure out what, what's being done, especially to the history of the poor folks who worked so hard to have the first black high school in Newton County. How hard they had fought with me, me pointing me out in direction, how hard they had fought just to make sure that the peoples of Newton County know that we were a part of their history too. And more folk were more than me. They wanted them to know. And what we're doing is erasing the history of Newton County.
Commissioner Sanders.
I just want to, uh, receive a report, and I may be put this, this will be my open records in front of public, to know exactly how much we paid to Almond Community Center. So, because here, for the first time, this is a private property, and we're using county funds to pay for their utilities, and nothing dealing with the county was hosted at this facility besides it used to be a precinct. But the pre, we vote what, once a year? So, uh, I would like to know how much money was sent over there, because I'm pretty sure now that this is in public and people are hearing, I'm going to get calls after this meeting. Why were we paying money to a private property paying their bills? They're going to be, going to be asked that question. Um, the other question I had, maybe for Patrick, I sent the email in regard, it's probably both, um, our county manager. I sent the email in regards to ARPA, and I made official communication, also made a statement publicly. I have been informed by residents that they have put in their estimates, their three estimates that they require, and individuals that are doing their work are not the ones that submitted the bids or the invoice. And my question was, and I've been hearing from some of the contractors, that it was illegal activity. My question to Patrick, is that, because I don't want to be a person who's a commissioner who's giving information and sitting on it and maybe illegal. Is that legal for contractors to go to homes? And look at the house and provide the invoices and inspect the homes? And once that individual comes out to the house, it's a completely different person who did not look at the home?
So I've, Mr. Cooper and I discussed this last week, and I've asked him to provide me with, with some documents and some information so I can perform an analysis. I, I, I'm not in a position to be able to answer the question of what you're telling me.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, let's see. And I'm kind of, I'm glad you, Commissioner Sanders, kind of talked a little bit about that. And, um, I had, had been called to come over to some of my constituents' homes and stuff. And it's a, it's a lot of shoddy work that they've been doing from putting glass on an old elder lady, eighty-seven years of age, gla, a glass shower, I guess, whatever you pull, pull like a curtain, but you pull, so that if she were to slip and fall, she could probably kill herself or cut herself really badly. To a toilet, whereas she's got arthritis, it's so low that it kind of hurts her to use it. And from, um, she showed me where, um, the paint was just really shoddy. And then, but last, what just really got me, and I guess what really made me go to her home, what she told me, said the lady got so rude with her. She said, well, you shouldn't have got anything anyway. You know, and those are the kind of folks that y'all hide. Y'all hide them people that go out to the hours, send your home and talk to them like that, we deserve better. We deserve better from this county, we deserve better oversight. And so what I'm asking you, Patrick, that we need to do a forensic audit, same kind you did on me, to make sure that the money was, is being spent right, and the people should be treated a whole lot better. And lastly, you know, there's a lot of young men that we talk about here in the, in the county who have worked hard to get their licenses in order to do work, and they don't even get looked at. In fact, uh, one gentleman worried me, and I said, well, I'm going to bring it up in the meeting if I get a chance. And I'm glad I got a chance. And the young man named is Rodrick Sawyer, I think he called the chairman, you know, I said, well, call the chairman. I said, maybe he can kind of help a little bit. And he said, I've been working so hard just to get some work and said, it's now on me, several other people live here, can't even get a job. And yet we got, um, I think Ms. Kennedy, who have made, I guess, a company, I want to just put that on her, over a million dollars of the same money we're trying to help folks with, over a million dollars. And then you hear that some of the houses that are being repaired, it's been, uh, been repaired for people for their rental property. And so that's what they're telling me. So there's need to be an audit, a forensic audit to make sure that money is being spent right. And if not, if it's not being spent right, then we need to do something to the people, same way you're going to do to me and say that, well, you know, I'm spending, I'm taking the spending and doing something illegal. So possibility that they may be doing something illegal. So, you know, I don't know how we, how I may need to address it to the board so they can vote it down. What you think we need to do, Ms., uh, Mr. County Attorney?
So in order to initiate an audit of that type would require action by the board. The board would have to direct that to be done.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, I seek a motion that we approve a consent agenda, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Five oh, Ms. Ham.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is going to be item number ten, presented by Ms. Laura Bertram, Newton County Family Connection. It is regarding Newton County Family Connection is requesting the Newton County Board of Commissioners serve as the fiscal agent for the state allocation of funds to the Newton County Family Connection. Is Ms. Laura here?
It's, you got it. You know. You want to take it back? Man, it's a grant, y'all. It's a grant.
Yes.
It's a, this is a grant.
The request is for a grant, this is essentially an annual grant, and the state, the county serves as fiscal agent, which means all the money flows through the county. Brittany and her staff manage the accounting of it. You have to have a governmental entity be the fiscal agent. And you've done that probably for as long as Newton County Family Connection has been in business. Since nineteen ninety-eight.
Thank you, sir, I, I seek a motion, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion, Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, I formerly used to sit on the, uh, Family Connection Board, and I would like for, this, this would be my suggestion, of nonprofits to come before us that's seeking the funds, kind of like we're just doing with ARPA, even though it's federal dollars, to provide us what they have done. I've had these questions when I was on Family Connection, and I also asked those on the state Family Connection. We received, Family Connection does, uh, research on what's happening or occurring in Newton County versus our children, infidelity rates, um, I mean fertility rates, excuse me, fertility rates in regards to literacy and so forth. And my question has always been, sitting on the Family Connection Board, what are you going to do with this data? And I was told, they're just a data-driven board. And so when I spoke to the state Family Connection, and when I went to ACCG and spoke to those who are part of, um, Family Connection, and I brought this back to Family Connection, they said that is false, that when the data is provided, there has to be some type of Plan A, Plan B, on how are we going to correct or rectify the issue that's happening, or what we're going to do. Yes, we have partners, but no information has been delivered. So this is not something I'm here, as hearsay, I sat on the board and had these questions for almost two years, like what are we going to do with this information? So I believe that if we're providing funding to nonprofits that's doing something on our behalf, then we need to see what the results are from the data that they're collecting, because that's the reason why we're providing that information to them. Thank you.
So Patrick, this is a grant, this is a grant that comes straight in, directly into us and directly out, right?
That's right, this, these funds come to the Newton County Family Connection through the Newton County Board of Commissioners. This isn't county funds that are distributed.
Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, it passes, three, two. Ms. Ham.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number eleven, from our presenter, Ms. Brittany White, our finance director. It is actually the December two thousand and twenty-three finance report.
Good evening.
Presenting the December two thousand and twenty-three financials. December is the sixth month of our fiscal year, so this puts us halfway through our fiscal year FY twenty-four. So I'll start with our general fund revenues. To date, our revenues are fifty-one point four million, so that puts us at fifty-six point one nine percent of our revenues to budget. And these are two graphs that just show our monthly income and the revenue, and then our actuals to year-to-date. And for our general fund expenditures, to date, we've brought in, or we've spent forty point three million, so that's forty-three point seven percent of actuals, so we are trending a little bit under that fifty percent mark. And these graphs just show the monthly amount that we've had expenditures and then our year-to-date to budget. So at this point in the year, our revenues are eleven million over what we've spent, but that will progressively change throughout the year, because we are revenue-driven, um, usually by December or January timeframe once the tax revenues come in. So we have three enterprise funds, we have the water fund, so their revenue to date is five point one million, their expenses to date is three point two million. Our solid waste fund, their revenue to date is four point five million, and their expenses to date are two point eight million. And our Gators and Factory Shoals Fund, their revenue to date is a hundred and four thousand, and their expenses to date are a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. We have three current SPOLOST, our two thousand and eleven SPOLOST, we're, um, finally working on our last project there, the Historic Jail. Once that project's done, then we can close out the two thousand and eleven SPOLOST. The two thousand and seventeen SPOLOST, um, we've got about half those projects wrapped up and half are underway. And so we currently have thirty-three point nine million available left to spend in that SPOLOST. And our two thousand and twenty-three SPOLOST, we just started collecting on that back in July, so we're currently working on all the bonded projects and then the tier-one projects have started as well. Our collections to date, um, we have brought in nine point two millions, our projection was seven point five, so at this point in time, we're about one point seven over what we projected. And our impact fee fund, we currently have three point six million in there. Um, we have active projects going on in the library, the parks and wrecks, and the road, and also the admin. And that wraps up the report, any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, Commissioner? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is item number twelve, being presented by our Judge, Mr. Ken Nguyen, TJ Bement. It is actually the Alcovey Judicial Circuit is requesting approval of Conference Technologies, Inc. Construction Services Agreement Contract for Audiovisual for our Judicial Center.
Thank you, thank you for being, being here tonight, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you, I appreciate the board's attention. Uh, I bring to you, for your approval, a contract with CTI, which will be, uh, for the, which will be to update and upgrade our audiovisual technology in our courtrooms, all of our courtrooms here in the Judicial Center. Uh, this is a, uh, will be paid for by ARPA. The, uh, ARPA grant, uh, allows the Judicial Circuit to apply for these grant funds. I did so on behalf of the Circuit. All of the courtroom, all the AV technology in the courtrooms, except in the Circuit, except for one, and that's Courtroom Two in Walton County needed upgrading, and so this will take care of that.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Um, it's been motioned, uh, by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh, thank you so much.
Very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda we have is item number thirteen, presented by Katie Ryder, Jennifer Warren, Newton County Juvenile Court Services. Our juvenile court is requesting approval of Break the Cycle Counseling and Consulting LLC. Is Katie or Jennifer available?
Thank you, Patrick. So the, the juvenile court has received grant funding already for this program. And what this program is, uh, the, the grant funding is a specific grant for juvenile court's prevention and intervention program. And they are proposing retaining a company called Break the Cycle Counseling and Consulting to essentially operate the prevention and intervention program on behalf of the juvenile court. The total cost of a service is ninety-eight thousand, uh, let me get the exact number, ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh, thank you so much. Ms. Ham.
Mr. Chair, the next item is item number fourteen, presented by Mr. Chester Clegg, our Transportation Director. Public Works is requesting the Newton County Board of Commissioners approval of the Loews Design Professional Services Agreement Amendment Number Three for the Yellow River Trail Project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to let, um, Jeff Prime take the lead on this, this project here.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
We've had the good fortune on this segment one of the trail system to be working with four separate developers who are willing to work with us to align the trail system in a way that allow them to not only donate the easements, but in some cases actually build part of the trail. But in doing so, we're having to do some adjustments to easements and to design with Loews Design to make that happen. This amendment would make us whole with them on the amendments and adjustments that they're making, and allow us to continue to work with those developers to get everything lined up and ready for acquisition.
Thank you, sir. Can I seek a motion, please? Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Jeff, are we talking about the trail that ran by the, runs by the trailer park? Or is it a little further?
So Segment One starts in Port Adele at the Yellow River, at the Yellow River Park.
Correct.
Goes up to Brownsbridge Road, and then up over to Crowell Road, up to the interstate, I twenty.
All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, sir.
Going along the same line, we have, we are proposing tonight some signed easements with General Estate for Parcel One and Parcel Three. This would connect the Denny Dobbs Development over to Fairview. So we have a parcel number one for the acquisition fee of the easements for seven thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars, and Parcel Three, thirty-one thousand dollars. So we're asking for the authority to sign on, sign on for these and close.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Any, all in favor? Thank you. Five oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The final item that we have is the Elmig Project for this next year, two thousand and twenty-four. The county's receiving approximately one point five million dollars from GDOT, most coming from, most of the money being funded by the state gas tax. We have to make a thirty percent match at four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. The total project is close to two million dollars for this next year, and it includes about eleven miles of resurfacing, which you'll notice that our miles of resurfacing is continuing to drop because it's gotten a lot more expensive to resurface. Five, six years ago, we were close to twenty miles a year. This year, we're around eleven, and we're not getting a lot more money from the state. So the list of the projects for each district has been included with the package, and we're requesting permission to submit the tax project list to GDOT for Elmig funding.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
Director Clegg, you stated that the list was submitted with the packet. Is that list going to be, forgive me if it was already sent to commissioners and I missed it, is that the same list where you actually resurfaced in various districts as well? Or that's just for the various other areas?
The, the list that included in the package, packet is for the two thousand and twenty-four resurfacing for each, it's the list of the roads for each district.
Okay. So I think I probably was not clear. So is that, was that list included in this packet? I was going to say, excuse me if I. So when do we have time to, if we have corrections to, or would like to change certain surfacing in our area? When would you like that be submitted back to you?
What we, what we can do, if we, we're going to have to do some resurfacing with straight SPOST money. So if there aren't any commissioners that are concerned about some, some other streets that need to be resurfaced this year, we're going to have to pick up a good, a good number of roads with our SPOST. So we'd be, certainly, we want to entertain that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. What I want to ask you is, just off the top of your head, is what district may get, if we, if we go by districts, may do, have the most resurfacing done in it?
You're talking about for this next year, for this list? I'd, I'd have to add up the mileage, and then, of course, it won't match up with the, necessarily with the cost, but I don't know off the top of my head. But I could, you know, we could add that up. They're, they're fairly close.
I would appreciate it if you could maybe get it to the county manager, and then he makes sure I get it.
Thank you, sir. All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is item number seventeen for discussion and consideration of appointments to the Tax Assessor's Board. The nominees are Mr. Charles Berry, Mr. Jonathan Blackshear, Ms. Cynthia Butler, Keith Dalton, and Ms. Jackie Smith, not County Clerk Jackie Smith.
Oh, I will? It don't matter? Okay. I can do that? So what I'm going to do, like Patrick just asked me, I'm going to just call the name and let you guys vote on them? What's the question?
Patrick, can you share with the public on who are supposed to nominate? Because the reason why there's, I'm asking that question is because commissioners has been doing a process for thirty years to where each district has appointed for this Tax Assessor Board. And I did ask for, I did request for Attorney, I forgot Aaron's last name, forgive me. For him to be here, because when I was informed, it wasn't what he intended, what we're doing now. And so that's why I requested for him to be here, because this has turned into something different from what he stated. He didn't expect this to occur. So for almost thirty years, the board has appointed, each commissioner had appointed to this Tax Assessor Board. It was only just until it was time for District Three, and it is evident that it was time for District Three to reappoint, that we're now saying that we have been doing it wrong for thirty years, when there's evidence that was given to me by the county clerk that the board decided thirty years ago for equality, and that each district had a representation on their board. And I have the documents, and I provided, and you can also get that from Ms. Jackie Smith, our county clerk. It's for equality for each district, that each district is represented on that Tax Assessor Board. When I came in office, our county clerk gave me all of the appointments that she said that I'm supposed to appoint as the District Three Commissioner. And the Tax Assessor was on that document. And so now, in two thousand and twenty-four, we are changing up. Now that we're doing this, I want to make sure this is on record, because I did do an open records to ask Ms. Jackie Smith, who's our county clerk, to provide who actually made, are making these appointments tonight. So Mr. Charles Berry, who was the District Three appointment, who's been, who was appointed for twelve years, twenty-four years, am I right, twenty-four years? I mean, twenty-four years from this board, from District Three Commissioners, which his term expired December thirty-first. Charles Berry was nominated by Commissioner Cowan, Commissioner Edwards, and Chairman Baines. The second person, Jonathan Blackshear, which Commissioner Henderson's district is coming up for reappointment, so I could see him being on here. That is Commissioner Henderson, and that's Jonathan Blackshear, Mr. Jonathan Blackshear. Ms. Cynthia Butler, of course, was my appointment, that was asked of me to put in place by our county clerk, as she did the processes every year, was Ms. Cynthia Butler. And Mr. Keith Dalton is Commissioner Cowan, and Ms. Jackie Smith was Chairman Baines. And I want to make sure that's on record. Thank you.
So since you put it on record, let's make sure you put it on record correctly.
This came from the county clerk.
My appointment was Ms. Jackie Smith.
Well, you might want to take that up with Ms. Jackie.
No, I don't might want to do that.
This came from the county, Mr. Chairman, this is not a rebuttal. You're the one taking this into, out of context. I'm just reading what our county clerk submitted to me as an open records. So this did not come from Commissioner Sanders. This came from Jackie Smith, our county clerk. If you would like for me to right now forward you that email, I can send it to you directly. It was an ORR.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in January of two thousand and twenty-one, it was stated that this board tends to do what they want to do and not follow the policies or the laws that are currently in place. And so it is amazing to me how that all of a sudden, we don't want to follow the policies, the procedures, or the laws that are in place because we've been doing something for twenty-plus years. It was stressed consistently that this board needs to follow the processes, the procedures, the standard operating procedures, the laws. All of those things should be followed. And so we can't base this decision off of what has been done for twenty years. We base this decision and this process based off of what our county attorney presented to us, this board to say, hey, you may have been doing something one way, but it may not be the correct way. And so as of January two thousand and twenty-one, it was stressed that this board needs to follow the law and follow the processes and procedures that are in place. And so with this decision, that is exactly what this board has chosen to do, is now look at, were we doing it the right way, or were we not? And if we are not doing it the right way, it would behoove this board to change how you're doing it so that we are following the law. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, for a matter of record, I want it stated that, or reflected on the record, that not a person on the current, that current board, meaning Item Seventeen's board, Tax Assessor's Board, not a member listed, lives in District One, and not a current member of that board is in District One. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you so much, and thank you, Commissioner, for your documentary. We have been doing things based on the individual. Let's just make it clear. We've been doing it based on the individual. Ms. Jackie Smith provided to me that this board, since we're talking about law and processes, this board, not this one that's sitting here, the board previously, voted to do it by district. That document was given to me. That document was presented in my hand. If you'd like me to forward those open records to you, I can give it to any resident in this building. They can have it. It wasn't until twenty twenty-four, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, when Ms. Jackie told me I had to make my appointment. And as I stated in the previous, previous discussion, that I've been asked for almost a year, and people have been calling me, trying to find out who was I going to appoint to this board. It wasn't until that I said I was not going to reappoint Mr. Charles Berry, that it became an issue. Every person on this board, whether they live in the district, you appointed them. So if you didn't point somebody in your district, that's your fault. That's not my fault. You appointed them. It's on record on which commissioner, every commissioner on here has appointed somebody. So if you didn't point somebody in your district, then you have to take that up with your residents, why you didn't put anybody on the board to represent your district. But the board that was here previously wanted equality and based it on that. So if you want facts, go do an ORR and read it for yourself versus making statements that are untrue. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, in nineteen seventy-five, Reverend Harry Carter was the first person of color to sit on this board. And the reason why he was sitting on this board was because the law had changed so that you could have, people in the underserved district could have a representative of their own. And as the board had changed, what it did was, they would have run each commissioner. And I guess I've been blessed to sit on this board. He gave everybody the opportunity to appoint someone out of district. He was to give every commissioner, every district, the opportunity for, for him or her to appoint somebody to be on the Tax Assessor Board in every other board. But unfortunately, times have changed. If it hadn't been for nineteen seventy-five, I wouldn't have been here on this board. It'd probably be looking a whole lot different. If it hadn't been for nineteen seventy-five, Commissioner Mason wouldn't have been on this board if it had not been for the people who stood up for the right for everybody. If it had not been for nineteen seventy-five, and it had been, it's not a long year, like a hundred years, two, three hundred years ago, Commissioner Sanders wouldn't have been on this district. So what it boiled down to was that giving each commissioner the right to do it. Now, you can, you can go back and find some, a lawyer to go back and resurge and say, well, you know, you shouldn't, but that's the way it had always been done. But it's, like you said, it's changing. And I don't, I'm not saying for, for the better. And I'm going to say one other thing. If it had not been for nineteen seventy-five, we wouldn't have the county manager that we have, regardless of what nobody said or how you voted. So nineteen seventy-five has given, given us this board to look like the population of Newton County, of Newton County. And so it's time that we should stand up for what's right and good. And let's stop going backwards. We're going backwards, y'all, in case you didn't know. We're going backwards. Let's move forward together. Save the Unity March, you know, and I'm going to say this. We had all those pictures there in there of doing civil rights. And out of all the pictures they had down there, you know, the Unity March with Forrest Sari and Tyrone Brooks and myself, that was the only one that had a name on it. If you had looked at the picture close, you would have seen J.C. Henderson there. So let's start, let us stop going backwards, and let's move forward. Thank you, Mr. C.
Thank you, Colin, for the vote. Ms. Cynthia, I'm sorry? Yeah, I need a, I need a motion. I need a motion for Ms. Cynthia Butler.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Ms. Cynthia Butler for the Tax Assessor Board.
Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Sanders, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you. It failed three-two. I need a motion for, Mr. Charles Berry. Is there a second? It's been second, it's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? He passed three-two. Mr. Jonathan Blackshear, I need a motion.
You've got an appointment.
Huh? I know. I said Charles Berry passed.
Yeah, so you're going to, you're only making one appointment. So you have made an appointment?
No, it's, it's two appointments.
Oh, you're going to go ahead and pick the second one as well?
Yeah. It's two appointments, from my understanding.
If, if I may?
There are two.
Yeah.
It's two right now.
If, if I may? If I may? When I was notified that the Texas Office, they wanted Mr. John Blackshear, they answered, well, who could I lay? Because I was, you know, for all the years, I had appointed Mr. John Blackshear. And so I said, well, do y'all have a recommendation? So the recommendation was to, for me to make the appointment of Mr. John, John Blackshear. So I made the informal motion.
Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? He failed three-two. Mr. Keith Dalton, Keith Dalton. Is there a motion? Okay, Ms. Jackie Smith. Is there a motion? Okay, um, Ms. Jackie Smith, is there a motion? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passes four-one. Thank you so much. Next is...
Number eighteen, Chairman, the alcohol license. It's the final reading. Georgia CVS Pharmacy LLC, CVS store number eighty-four eighteen, one oh two six seven Highway thirty-six, Covington, Georgia three zero zero one four, District Five, licensee Tiffany R. Calhoun.
Thank you. That's number nineteen. That's number nineteen.
My apologies.
Final reading, uh, Commissioner Cowan. Yeah, Commissioner Cowan. Yes, sir. Is there a second?
Make a motion to approve the alcohol license.
Is there a second? It's a motion by Commissioner Cowan, second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Any, all in favor? It passes five oh. Next is, um, citizen comments. Guys, before we get going with comments tonight, I want to make sure we we all experienced something that was very disturbing last, at the last board meeting. Um, I want to assure you that that will not be tolerated. If it happens again, you will be asked to leave the building. You will be asked to leave the building. Um, so with that being said, if you would please come on up, if you have citizen comment, you have three minutes to do so, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Eva Greer.
Hold on one second. Hold on, hold on one second. Okay, go ahead. Yes, ma'am.
I'm known now as the Facebook queen. I was on Facebook to get a message over to how I have been treated with this, how, with this senior citizen deal. I have stuff in my, my bathroom. This is just over little stuff. I needed a higher bathroom. They took a high one out and put one like this down. All right? Then, I, this is what the message that I've got. We'll give you another bathroom, but it'll be lower than the one you got. I said, well, if you give me one lower than the one I got, I'd be on the floor. I was on three-way, I was on three-way talk, she, uh, with this, I don't know neither one of, really, I don't know who in charge, and I don't know who who was the contractor was. All I know is photo of a bath, and all I know is, is the sign on the best. She signs her stuff at best. Uh, so I, it's, it's too much to, but anyway, I got a photo of a bath. I, they, they did my, uh, walk-in shower, and he had, they had two people doing it. My walk-in shower is like this guy, he did it just like he was doing it in a million-dollar house. It's nice. Okay? I had stuff, I needed them. They took a big mirror off the wall. I didn't get that back. They took, uh, vanity. I didn't get that back. I told them, you know, asked what they're gonna put it back, and said, the county said that I could not have that. Okay? Then I have, they put glass doors on the, my shower. And I'm eighty years old, and I told them at the beginning, and I said, I don't, I don't want to do glass sliding doors because I might fall off, you know, so danger, they shaking, they rattling. Okay? They said, well, you're gonna send that, they sent a inspector out there to check what I had wrote down. And so I, um, and I brought it over here earlier that Monday because they left that, my house that Sunday, New Year, uh, New Year Eve. And one of the guys that was with this, with them, said that you, you gotta sign the paper. You gotta sign the paper. And then, see, that was that, that was that Saturday night. So I knew if I signed the paper, that was it. My daughter, she had, she was gonna know it was red. Granny, please sign the paper. Please sign the paper.
Thank.
I said, I, I'm not signing a blank thing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I went on and on, you know, I went in there in my bathroom, I saw all my stuff that's gone. Stuff, my, like, my fifty-year-old mirror, big mirror. That no more. Put, put one back like the winter pan.
Thank you. Your time's up. We greatly appreciate it.
Okay, well, I'll go on.
All right, thank you, love.
Okay.
Thank you.
But anyway.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. Anyone else would like to make citizen comments? Anyone else? Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I, I, I wanna, I wanna reiterate, as I do every few months. Um, we had a couple of churches come before of us, before us this evening, um, representing ministries um, that a- and filling gaps in our community that government just can't. And, uh, we were able to assist in terms of the ARPA funds this time. But those organizations existed without the ARPA funds, uh, as well. So my hat's off to them and organizations just like them for for standing in the gap for, for governments, standing in the gap for families that that are struggling, uh, uh, generally in our society. And I just want to tip my hat to them one more time. I'll, I'll continue to do that. But, uh, it, I, I just can't emphasize enough how important it is for these organizations, whether it be churches, civic organizations, uh, what have you, that, uh, filling in the gaps for, for, for where government and and others just can't. Thanks so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you so much. Um, first, I want to, uh, say Happy Founder's Day to the ladies of, the women of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. And if I don't say this, my family will probably get me. For those who don't know, my entire family is, uh, members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority and Alpha Phi Alpha. I'm the first one who's took, who went out of the legacy to the fold to went to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, whose founding day was on the thirteenth, and Happy Founder's Day to the women of Alpha Kappa Alpha, whose founding day was on the fifteenth. Also, I want to speak on January twenty-second at eight P M, where Newton County, point in time when we would be counting our unsheltered and, uh, our unsheltered population to make sure that we are counted. That's gonna be with the Community Action Now and Community, Department of Community Affairs. Will be here in Newton County. It's gonna be housed at the Newton County Sheriff's Office. So they're also looking for volunteers for those who would like assists with this program. So you can also go to the Community Action Now page or the Community Affairs, and I also post a flyer as well on my page. I also want to, uh, give my condolences, and and I wouldn't, it's kind of a touchy situation in regards to mental health and suicide. Um, it's Antoinette Bonnie Kadia Bailey, who was the Vice President of Student Affairs at Lincoln University in Missouri. And her story is so touching because of her being a female in leadership who was constantly bullied and had to say it by her male counterparts. She committed suicide because she constantly reached out for help. She constantly kept stating to the board that these things were happening and were occurring, and things were going on, and nobody listened to her. So in her final letter, this just happened on January eighth, in her final letter, before she took her life, she wrote in that letter everything that was done to her being bullied. And these are facts. This is not something I'm stating, of African-American women in leadership who always are bullied. These are not coming from Commissioner Sanders. You can look it up yourself. It's facts. There are many cases that are out there, because they always think that the African-American woman is strong. We can take it, we can do it, we can endure it, which we can. All women can. And it's not just African-American women that are suffering from various things, women in the workforce, women in the workplace. So I want to give my condolences to her family, and I, I hope and pray that this is also a lesson, that when someone shouts out and says certain things are happening to them, we should listen, because this is not only happening to women. We have some cases here in Newton County where it's happened to men as well. Thank you.
Commissioner, uh, Cowan.
The six acres of land at Turner Lake that was gonna be donated to us, where we at on that?
Um, I'm familiar with that. Uh, as I sit here today, I think it is ready to come to the board at the next meeting. I'll confirm that tomorrow.
Okay.
But, uh, we have, we have done our due diligence on it, so I think we're ready. But I'll confirm tomorrow and let the board know.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, Mr. C. Well, first of all, I just want to thank Turner family for donating that property. And I would like to thank Frank Junior, uh, for inviting me over into his office and said, J C said, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing something good, um, for Newton County by donating, donating that property. And I, I look forward to the, um, water park, uh, probably, which will probably be done in phases, I think, about nineteen million dollars, which is, which will be in District Four. Uh, I just want to say one thing, well, maybe a couple right quick, before, before, before I run out of time. When the two churches came here, I'd asked, and asked, and asked, and asked, that I have a list, or maybe make it public, who I was receiving funding. And I, I, and I think I was, and I maybe I need to make that over record request because I never got it. And it's my understanding that, and maybe somebody correct me, maybe County Manager, that Pastor Bill only received about sixteen million. I mean, sixteen thousand, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Sixteen thousand. And, uh, Church of Covenant, which is in District Four, they, they received fifty thousand for their youth, some type of youth pro- program, another thirty thousand for their food pantry. And so that's what I'm seeing. I mean, I, I look good and better, and I praise that. But all the same time, I think we're going back behind times, y'all. We're moving backwards. And if you were to see that list, you'll see the reason why we're going backwards. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, today I was actually honored, um, to be invited to the installation ceremony for the Alcovee High School's, um, student bi-, uh, student business, um, or association. Um, and so I was invited to, um, that today, and it was an amazing opportunity to be able to speak, uh, actually, I'm sorry, the Student Government Association, uh, at their Student Government Association, uh, installation ceremony. Uh, it was great just to see this, uh, new Student Government Association started, uh, at Alcovee High School. The things that they're going to do, uh, at the school with their student body. Uh, they have some great staff that are leading them. Uh, they have an amazing, uh, president and, uh, student advisor. Uh, and the ceremony, uh, today was just well put together. And I'm just excited, uh, to see what, uh, the Student Government Association at Alcovee High School is going to be doing. Uh, um, I have offered, uh, my, uh, services to be able to assist the Student Government Association, uh, whenever they need. Uh, and so it was just amazing to be able to sit there and, or to stand there and speak to the, uh, students, uh, to the parents, to the staff, and to really be able to be a support system for this new Student Government Association. Uh, and so I just wanted to congratulate Alcovee High School on the beginning of an amazing, uh, Student Government Association. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Uh, before we go, I just want to, uh, send a, um, great big thank you to Pastor Lett, who are right now conducting a warm and shelter, um, when it's twenty-three degrees outside. She's doing things that nobody in this community is actually excited about doing. Um, we all getting ready to go home to our houses and cut our heat on, and getting our cars and getting ready to drive out with our heat on. And there's a ton of people that's out there that is, um, it's not fortunate enough to have that comfort tonight. So please, ma'am, please, sir, keep them in your thoughts and your prayers. With that being said, we're gonna, uh, seek a motion that will adjourn tonight. The motion by Commissioner, um, Henderson and second by Mason. Any, all in favor?